I'm gonna sing it. I'm gonna sing it. Sing it starts back.
I heard.
Oh, please. Sorry. I spoke. I'm sorry. I'm gonna sing it. I'm gonna sing it. I'll have to go. I'm gonna sing it. You're gonna be the same. I thought you had my background. So I always like me.
Hey. Come down to the hallway.
So, I said. All right, I feel good. Sure, 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 sure. 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 Beautiful. So. How about? Two, one, two, two, one, two, two. One, two, 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 two. Two, one, one, two, two.
Oh.
Yeah.
Fuck, fuck, fuck. What's the last? I was gonna say. That was. I got it. And they asked. Right when I said, right when I said, right when I said, I just said, wanna. You don't have to. Let's get a break. No wither pooce yet?
Never. Don't let me begin. Hey. Why am I creating? What's wrong with this? Who am I giving this to? I'm just creating. Okay. They are. Okay. Oh, no.
I've been here since two thirty.
Oh, really? Uh huh, I'm gonna move him up.
Then, um, texting with, um, texting with, uh, lots of.
Mark Tyson.
No, I had, that's, that's. What's up, Father?
He passed up.
I'm at Grand Baptist Church in Whitehaven. Is that what you're trying to put him at? You are the one? Yes, man. One of the. I'm saying. Thank you, Dave. All this time. That's my mother. Trying to get her to place on his table. So many better than you would. Like some of his creatures. Eight, everyone mad. As we're watching. So we allow these people to. But she said she saw. She making. There's no. And you know. That's. Nobody wants to. Counselors. Welcome. I'm waiting. Oh. I'm talking. I'm dead to grow. First of all. It's right here. But first. Weird.
Uh huh.
So all I gotta do is get through. It's actually. It's on my mind.
Don't try. Inside my. I had to.
She's got. Hello.
You can up there. Uh huh.
Testing. Hey, Brian.
Council members, let's prepare for the meeting. Council members and staff. Sergeant at arms, please call our March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two council meeting to order. I would like to recognize our chaplain of the day, Dr. William Smith the third, senior pastor of Berean Missionary Baptist Church, invited by Councilwoman Robinson. The prayer will be immediately followed by a surprise. Dr. William Smith the third.
Let us pray. Our God, the great eternal one, we thank you for this day that you've given us, a day that we've never seen before and a day that we won't ever see again. How grateful we are to stand in the midst of these walls as we are blessed with liquid sunshine. Thank you for these representatives of the councilmen and women, whom you've given the sacred trust of participating and governing and the overall planning for this city. Master, we ask you now for your blessing as we begin this meeting, which will serve to improve the lives of the citizens of Memphis and the surrounding areas. It is our corporate prayer that you would grant these leaders with your wisdom, with your resolve and your compassion. May your spirit guide every heart, every mind, every word, so that by your power and by your justice, by your peace, by your prosperity and holiness are experienced by each individual that has been blessed to live in this city. Help our council to continue to fully embrace the enormity of this task and to carefully execute their duties with integrity. Bless their families, bless their loved ones who participate in this sacrifice of living and leading vicariously. Encourage them and grant them by your joy during these difficult and lonely times. Let your loving light move throughout this hall, throughout this house, these hollow grounds today and every day, for the sake of your glory. It is in the name of the triune God we pray. Amen.
Let's say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Robinson may be recognized.
Good afternoon, colleagues and guests. The city of Memphis, Tennessee, by the city council brings greetings. Be it hereby known that Reverend Dr. William Smith the third, in recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental processes, has been appointed chaplain of the day for the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all of the honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives pertaining to the office and to the display of this certificate, given under the seal of this city, twenty-second day of March, twenty-twenty-two, our chairwoman, Javida Swerengen, and presented by Councilwoman Patrice Robinson. And the council does not go without sending some treats from the council, so please use me with your discretion.
Thank you very kindly. I believe Councilman Cov- well, Madam Comptroller, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Councilmember Canaly.
Here.
Carlisle.
Present.
Colvette.
Here.
Easter Thomas. Ford. Johnson. Jones. Logan. Morgan. Robinson. Smiley.
No place I'd rather be.
Jones.
Here.
Smiley. Warren.
Present.
Chairwoman Swerengen.
Present. Thank you very kindly.
Swerengen, you have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. I believe Vice Chairman Jones has read the minutes for our March first meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've read the minutes and find them to be in order, and I move the adoption of the March first meeting of the Memphis City Council.
Thank you very kindly. Do you mind doing it digitally?
I'm sorry. Uh, it's not on the screen yet. Yes.
That's correct. Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, please conduct a roll call vote to approve the minutes of the March first, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes. We can clear our screen so we may cast our votes. It's not showing on our screen.
Are you ready to cast a vote? Are you okay?
It's not showing on my screen. It's not showing on Councilman Jones' screen.
It's coming up.
We don't have it.
Tac, we're missing. We got two screens aren't coming up.
It's not. Those... I cannot.
Need to cannot.
Canaly, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Thank you very kindly. This item passed. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March twenties-two, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Comment cards are available for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. Our sergeant at arms has agendas available upfront. Please be mindful that all cards must be completed in their entirety, including the item number you wish to speak on. Cards that include a topic that are left blank will be held until the end of the meeting for general comment sections. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in the comment card to the sergeant at arms before the item is called. As chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly registered to speak by submitting a completed comment card to the sergeant at arms. Please be reminded that all of us must abide by the rules of the quorum during our council meeting. One housekeeping item, please silence your phones. Madam Comptroller, items four will be held until April nineteenth. Item nine will be held for three months. Item seven has been withdrawn. Our add-on items are items thirty-five through fifty-three. Same night minute items are items six, sixteen, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, please call item number one.
Item number one was performed by the Yale Society of Orpheus and Bacchus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Pleasure that I would like to introduce the second oldest singing group at Yale University, the Society of Orpheus and Bacchus, to sing our national anthem. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very kindly. As they are coming forward, Councilman Covette, you may be recognized.
Thank you. Item number nine was held for three, uh, three months. That is the Elvis Presley case. If you are here to hear the Elvis Presley case, please meet me in the back real quick.
Thank you very kindly. See, Dr. Warren is going to recognize them with certificates from the Memphis City Council. Madam Comptroller, please call item number two.
Item number two is a resolution honoring Mr. Al Green and fifty years of Let's Stay Together, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Memphis City Council.
Chair, Lady Swerengen.
Thank you very kindly, Vice Chair. What a pleasant surprise. Whereas few other vocalists in African-American history have been more widely praised than Mr. Al Green, a virtue also and innate talent known for his soulful interpretation of love's greatest highs and lows, who can articulate the delicate shades of human emotion with his voice alone. And will this year will celebrate over fifty years of entertainment as a Memphis music legend. And whereas born on April thirteenth, nineteen forty-six, in Forest City, Arkansas, Mr. Al Green's family moved to Michigan in nineteen sixty-four, where Mr. Green started performing first as The Creations, before renaming themselves as Al Green and the Soulmates. However, Mr. Green's breakthrough moment came in nineteen sixty-eight, when he had met Mr. Willie Mitchell, chief producer and vice president of High Records in Memphis, and started a partnership that would change popular music forever. And whereas and Mr. Green, Mr. Mitchell saw a vocalist whose masterful use of timing, pitch, and tone could help him reinvent the Memphis soul sound, and he has proven correct by the success of Mr. Green's nineteen seventy-one album, Al Green Gets Next To You, which delivered the single Tired Of Being Alone, which sold more than a million copies and has driven by rhythm section that introduced the world, the new sounding soul, and the funk coming out of Memphis. And whereas however, Mr. Green was a fact just getting started, the title track to Mr. Green's follow-up album, Let's Stay Together, released fifty years ago on January thirty-first, nineteen seventy-two, would be his biggest hit, reaching number one on both the R&B and pop charts in nineteen seventy-two, becoming a certified gold record. And in twenty-ten, was selected by the Library of Congress as an addition to the National Recording Registry for its cultural, historical, and aesthetic significance. And whereas in the same year, during October of nineteen seventy-two, Mr. Green released I Still In Love, I'm Still In Love With You, which produced the singles I'm Still In Love With You and Look What You've Done For Me, which both became top five hits on the U.S. Pop Chart, as well as Love and Happiness, which was frequently and has been named on countless greatest songs of all times, ranking most notably in the Top One Hundred by Rolling Stone Magazine. And whereas, Mr. Green's iconic nineteen seventy-two albums and both recorded at Royal Recording Studios at thirteen-twenty South Lauderdale in South Memphis, produced by Mr. Willie Mitchell and released by High Records, solidifying Mr. Green as a Memphis music icon whose smooth, silky sound and undeniable falsetto is still celebrated. sound and undeniable, for center is still celebrated 50 years later. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council highlights Mr. Al Green and 50 years of Let's Stay Together. On this tremendous accomplishments, contributions, and legacy to American soul music and the city of Memphis, given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 22nd day of March 2022, Jamita Swearingen, Chairman of the Memphis City Council. And I so move, Vice Chair.
That's been moved by Councilwoman Swearingen, seconded by Councilwoman Smiley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I please bring the great Boo Mitchell to the podium, the son of Willie Mitchell. All right? As you stand with me, we're gonna be highlighted, ladies and gentlemen, council members.
Thank you, council members. I really appreciate this honor. I'll accept this on behalf of Mr. Green. And we'll have a performance from Gerald Richardson, Memphisone from Cameo, and Steve Bethany on guitar from Andrew Stone and Eric Benet.
So, a preference is that. Do we not need to learn to stay together through good and bad at all times? I think we need to adopt that song as our mantra going forward. You know, 50 years, that has brought attention to the city of Memphis, and we really need to understand that song in detail. But before we let this family leave, let's not let them go without recognizing the Mitchell family. So, very briefly, I have a resolution here recognizing the Mitchell family, and it reads, whereas the Mitchell family of Memphis has, as a family, made some of the most substantial contributions to the outstanding and unique musical legacy of Memphis. Infusing their music with a spirit and sound that put the Bluff City on, put the Bluff City on the map as one of the most well-known music cities in the world. The city of Memphis is proud to recognize soul parenter Willie Mitchell and his wife, Anna Barbara Mitchell, daughter Divine Mitchell, and Lorraine Mitchell, and sons Archie Turner Mitchell, Lawrence Boo Mitchell, and Archie Baldhead Mitchell, and three grand dollars Honor Mitchell B., Bridge Ask You Tyrone, and Nika Turner Anne. It goes on, but I'm gonna make it brief, and it says, whereas Lawrence Boo and Archie Mitchell have run Royal Studios since the early 1990s. During their tenure, they have worked with an endless list of chop-talking performers. Boo has also ventured into filmmaking as a producer of the music documentary, Take Me to the River, a film about the music of Memphis and the Mississippi Delta. Then in 2016, Boo made his biggest stamp on Memphis music history by winning the Record of the Year Grammy Award for his work on Mark Robinson and Bruno Mars' mega hit, Uptown Funk, marking the first time a record made in Memphis earned a Grammy for Record of the Year. And whereas the multi-generational legacy of the Mitchell family is awe-inspiring, inspiring, far-reaching, and with no signs of slowing down, continues to represent this very best of Memphis as hundreds of artists from around the world still travel to the Royal Studios, hoping the Mitchell family can help make them find their own bit of Memphis music magic. And now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council recognizes the Mitchell family for their tremendous accomplishments and the gifts they have contributed so much soul, history, and the greatness to the city of Memphis, given by my hand under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 22nd day of March 2022, Jamita Swearingen and the entire Memphis City Council. Again, Boo, we thank you. We thank your family for all that you've done. Music is part of Memphis. We may have a great transportation system, we may have distribution, but we have music, and we are so appreciative to your family for making it happen.
Boo Mitchell, would you like to share on behalf of the Mitchell family?
Wow, this is a huge honor. We love this city, travel all over the world, but there's no place like home, and Memphis has touched so many people around the world. So, I'm honored to be here, honored for me and my family. Thank you guys so, so much, because I love Memphis all day, every day. Memphis.
Thank you so much for putting Memphis on the map. Madam Comptroller, please call Item Number 5.
Item Number 5 is a resolution recognizing March 22, 2022, as Christian Brothers High School Basketball Day in the city of Memphis. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Canali.
Councilman Canali, you may be recognized. Thank you very kindly. As we see this great basketball team come forward, let's give it up for Christian Brothers High School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I read the proclamation into the record, I would like to make a few remarks. Colleagues, this is a special day for me. As a proud graduate of Christian Brothers High School, it's an honor for me to introduce you to the 2022 Tennessee Division II AA Basketball State Champs. With an undefeated season, might I add, and only losing one game in two seasons. Colleagues, this may come as a surprise to you, but my athletic acumen did not allow me to play varsity basketball when I was a freshman.
Shocker.
I did have Coach Bubba Lockett in the classroom, and what I know about Coach Lockett as a man is that he's a man of God, tasked with forming boys into young men, and he did it exceptionally. And these young men before you today are proof that hard work pays off. I had the privilege of watching them several times this season, and what I was able to witness was belief in themselves, in each other, in the coaching staff, and in their single mission, which was to get the job done, and they did it brilliantly. They won the first state title at Christian Brothers since 1987. And like I said, as an, also, it's an undefeated season. So without further ado, let me read the resolution into the record. Whereas on March 5, 2022, the Christian Brothers High School basketball team defeated Knoxville Catholic by a score of 79 to 72 in the TWSAA Division II AA State Championship Game. And whereas in doing so, the team secured for CBHS its first Division II AA State Title since 1987. And whereas the Purple Waves victory in the championship game capped an undefeated 28-0 season, making them one of only three teams from Memphis to become undefeated and state champions, and included a two-year run in which the team only lost one game. And whereas the win was scored over a team that had defeated another unbeaten rival in the tournament semifinal game, in which included a four-star signee to the University of Tennessee and one of the top high school junior players in the state. Furthermore, CBHS ended the game with four players in double-figure scoring, and the team scored a season-high in total points. And whereas the Brothers team included its own four-star signee Chandler Jackson, signed at Florida State University, who scored 20 points in the game to further enhance his all-time school scoring record, and was named the state tournament's Most Valuable Player. And whereas CBHS has been state runner-up four times, winning the 1987 championship, and went on to the semifinals in the past two seasons. Now therefore be it resolved that the Memphis City Council does hereby salute and commend the 2022 Christian Brothers High School basketball team, and proclaims March 22 as Christian Brothers High School Basketball Day in the city of Memphis, encouraging citizens also to commend team members for their discipline, dedication, hard work, and perseverance, given by my hand and under the great seal of the city of Memphis this 22nd day of March 2022. Ford Canali, Jamita Swearingen, Chairwoman. Congratulations, gentlemen. Best wishes in all your future endeavors, God bless you, wonderful. Coach, I've got something for you, and I want you to know that we don't give these out freely. The last time I gave this away was to the Pope. But you've earned it. So here's your key to the city. Congratulations.
Thank you very kindly. Congratulations, Christian Brothers basketball team. Madam Comptroller, please call Item Number 6.
Item Number 6 is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Asselman Street between Winchester Road and Flanders Avenue for Bishop Brandon B. Porter, District 3, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Robinson, and there is a request for same night minutes for this item.
Thank you very kindly, Councilwoman Robinson. You may be recognized. All right, for Bishop Porter.
Council members, it brings me great joy to be able to share with you this afternoon a resolution in honor of Bishop Brandon B. Porter. He has a long life, and I want to share it all with you this afternoon, but he has a convention in Jackson, Tennessee, and should be on his way in the rain. So we're gonna do an abbreviated version, and if you'll invite me to the church, I'll come back and make it right.
All right.
So, the Memphis City Council Resolution, whereas upon occasion, the city council approves the naming of specified public roads to honor those who have faithfully served this community. And Bishop Brandon B. Porter, pastor of the Greater Community Temple Church of God and Christ, is a phenomenal example of a true leader and community advocate who is deserving of this city's recognition and gratitude. And whereas Bishop Brandon Porter was born on December 15, 19, it's a 16, we gotta correct that, okay? The 16th, 1958, the late Bishop W.L. Porter and mother, Ida Marie Porter, destined for life, a great impact. And whereas Brandon B. Porter, an international preacher, motivational speaker, author, and recording artist, has for over 30 years shared his gifts of delivering a dynamic message of spiritual empowerment and family enrichment to his congregation at Greater Community Temple Church of God and Christ. Whereas Bishop Brandon B. Porter has held many distinguished positions within the Church of God and Christ as the local, district, jurisdictional, and national levels, including the Vice Chairman of the National Trustee Board, President of the International Youth Department, the National Director of Public Relations and Marketing, and the Executive Producer of the Church of God and Christ Today TV Show in 2009. Whereas in the, or at the 105th Annual Holy Convocation in 2012 in St. Louis, Missouri, and I was there, Bishop Brandon B. Porter was elected as one of the newest members of the Church of God and Christ's General Board, the highest executive and administrative board within the denomination, as well as serving as the Secretary of the International Church of God and Christ. Now therefore, and there was a couple more whereses, but now therefore be it resolved by the Memphis City Council of the city of Memphis, Tennessee, that congratulations I extended to Brandon Bishop Brandon B. Porter on this day of celebration and recognition of his many contributions, and that Castleman Street between Winchester Road and Flanders Avenue shall be designated and always remembered as Bishop Brandon Porter Street. Be it further resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix a suitable sign, so designating such public road, given by my hand under the seal of the great city of Memphis this 22nd day of March 2022, Patrice Robinson and our Chairwoman, Jamita Swearingen. Thank you, Bishop Porter. We congratulate you. Be safe on the road, and just let me know when I need to come out.
Thank you.
And then he wants to say something.
Thank you. Oh, I'm loaded up here. Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
And certainly thank you, Councilwoman Robinson, certainly to our chair and to the complete council and to each and every one of you that were part of this acknowledgement. Total surprise to me, someone in my staff, whatever, made this request, but I appreciate you all. You know, I gave you all a big basket. Did y'all get that basket?
Oh, yes, and thank you very kindly. We love it.
I didn't know this was coming, but I wanted to just thank you all. And I'm thanking you again for all that you do for our city, and this is a signal of honor, and I appreciate it so very much. My prayers are with you, as I know yours are with me. Thank you so much.
And safe travel to you, Bishop. Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. Of course, item number seven has been withdrawn, but in place of item number seven, I would like to recognize Councilman Canale. Carlisle.
That's right, it's Canole.
I'm looking at Carlisle and seeing him now.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I don't have any formal remarks. Council Chairwoman reminded me that we're in the middle of March Madness, and just to take the opportunity to recognize the University of Men's Basketball Team and Coach Anfreny Penny Hardaway for an incredible season and incredible run.
Go Tigers!
No one's here.
Go Tigers.
Go Tigers, Scott.
Thank you very kindly, Councilman Carlisle. Madam Comptroller, item number eight.
Item number eight is a resolution approving the Berry Hills Downs Plan Development at Berry Hills Road, beginning approximately 555 feet south of Chimney Rock Boulevard. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is PD 21-43.
Thank you very kindly. Councilwoman Johnson, you may be recognized.
We sent it down without recommendation, and it's so moved. Need a second? Okay.
Thank you very kindly. It's been moved, properly moved by Councilwoman Johnson, properly seconded by Councilman Warren. Now we're up for discussion, okay?
Does the body still need a presentation? We had one earlier.
Is there anyone that desires a presentation? There aren't any? There aren't any requests, Councilwoman? We have Councilman Warren in the queue.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that we're moving forward on this with the eight-foot setback or sideways garage and front porches on all the properties. Is that correct? Has that been agreed and...
That has not been modified.
I'd like to make that as a motion. Thank you.
Okay, so you've made a friendly amendment? Is there a second?
Second, Colvet.
Second, Colvet? Is there any opposition to the amendment? All right, we accepted friendly amendment. Is there anything further, Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you. I'm also very fond of the fact that 50% of the properties will have that brick veneer, no, not veneer, but 50% exterior wall on it. Okay, that's an agreement.
That wasn't in.
Okay.
Is that in there?
That's what I asked. He said it was.
Roger that. 50% brick minimum.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay, Councilman Jones, you withdraw?
Yes.
Is there any other member wishing to be recognized? All right, we're ready to vote on item number eight with the friendly amendment. Madam Comptroller, you have cleared the screens. We may cast our votes at this time for item number eight.
For this item.
Has everyone cast their votes for item number eight?
Number one.
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller,
Thank you.
Please call the consent agenda, including items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Before you do so, okay?
Item number 10 on our consent agenda is an ordinance to amend the Memphis City Council meeting dates for 2022. The ordinance number is 5820. Item number 11 is an ordinance amending ordinance number 5367 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Memphis, Tennessee, adopted on August 10, 2010, as amended, known as the Memphis and Shelby County Unified Development Code, so as to make certain changes in the youth districts provided in said ordinance. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. The case number is Z2-01, ordinance number 5821. Item 12 are notations. The Land Use Control Board met in the following cases were heard, and the recommendation was made requesting a date of public hearing. That date for both of these will be the next council meeting, April 5, 2022, for A, case number SUP 22-01, 150-foot monopole communications tower, and A, case number MJR 21-45, PD 94-356, Corus Tournament Trail Center. Item number 13 is a resolution approving the engineering plans entitled Sunset Downs PD 12B-1. Item number 14 is a resolution accepting public improvements for Ivy Grove Plan Development, PD 12-20, CR-5319, and authorizing release of bond. The contract number is CR-5319. Item number 15 is a resolution accepting public improvements for CR 5352, Portability Early Childhood Academy 3, and authorizing release of bond. The contract number is 5352.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller.
That concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller. Could you please clear the screen so we may vote on...
Madam Chair, may I speak for a moment? I'll move it for purposes of discussion and for a second, but I do have a question. May I ask a question of Director?
Certainly.
Director Zina, a quick question from Planning and Development. And I apologize, I should have asked you out in the hall, but I slipped my mind. On 12A and B, just refresh mine and the colleagues' memory. If you come to Land Use Control Board, for example, and let's say you're approved, someone appeals it to council, obviously they were on the losing side. Is that... does someone who spoke, or is there a requirement that if you spoke in opposition or signed an opposition card, then you could appeal it? Or is the rule that just anybody can appeal it to council for whatever reason?
Thank you, Jones, Zina, Director of Planning and Development. Councilman Colvet, your question really relates to item B. Item A is setting a public hearing. This wouldn't be... Item 12A isn't an appeal. It's simply setting a public hearing because there was opposition at Land Use Control Board. Now, 12B is the case where this item was rejected by Land Use Control Board. In this case, the applicant, RE Investments with Representative Cindy Reeves, the applicant is appealing the rejection of Land Use Control Board. Now, if it were the other way around, where it was approved by Land Use Control Board and it was appealed by the opposer, it would have to be either someone who spoke in opposition or wrote in opposition.
Okay, so if I wrote an opposition email and it was approved, then I could appeal it. So all I had to do was just send an email saying I oppose it. And then I would have grounds to appeal. Okay. I apologize, colleagues. I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on how that worked.
Mr. Brockus kindly reminded me it is within 10 days of the decision by the Land Use Control Board that that appeal has to be made.
Okay, so the clock's always ticking.
So it is ticking, and it is really just in these cases of major modifications to plan developments, then also subdivisions where the Land Use... Yes, the Land Use Control Board has final disposition. It's really just those cases that get appealed up to you. But again, 12B is the applicant who's appealing a rejection.
Okay, so just in the future, if you write an email opposing something and it still is accepted, you can just simply appeal it. You have grounds to appeal. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very kindly. Any further discussion regarding this item? This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Ford. The screens have been cleared, so we may cast our votes for item for the consent agenda.
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, for clarity, the staff, they're wondering, item number six was moved by Councilwoman Robinson and seconded by whom? Ford. Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, may we please proceed to the fiscal consent agenda, item number 16.
Item is a resolution for approval to receive $9,030.96 for the Memphis Youth City Council from Memphis Light Gas and Water to be used for supply purchases for the Memphis Youth Council. Project number GR91020, award number 13227, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Office of Youth Services. There is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. I see no one in the queue. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for the fiscal consent agenda.
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Item... Madam Comptroller, let's proceed to the MLGW fiscal consent.
Thank you. That would take us to item number 17. A resolution approving change number two to contract number 12126, Trend Micro Enterprise Support with Unico Technology LLC in the funded amount of $78,260.88. Item number 18 is a resolution awarding contract number 12332, mail operations, shipping, and receiving solution to Pitney Bowes, Inc. in the funded amount of $77,154.24. Item number 19 is a resolution approving the payment of an invoice from Tennessee Valley Public Power Association for the 2022 annual membership dues in the amount of $52,455.29. Item number 20 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to MVA Power, Inc. for substation capacitors in the amount of $123,124. Item number 21 is a resolution approving the payment of an invoice from the American Gas Association for the 22 annual membership dues renewal in the amount of $56,788. Item number 22 is a resolution awarding contract number 12335, Davis Number 3, variable frequency drive replacement to Shelby Electric Company, Inc. in the funded amount of $818,000. Item number 23 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Double Engineering Company for software agreement equipment and accessories in the amount of $253,955. Item number 24 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to engineered sealing components for replacement bushings in the amount of $109,752. Item number 25 is a resolution approving change number 18 to contract number 11292, cashiering system replacement with system innovators in the funded amount of $45,806.3. Item number 26 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Allrite Plumbing Parts, Inc. for 12-foot coated steel gas pipe in the amount of $220,012. Item number 27 is a resolution awarding contract number 12339, Janitorial Services to Mason's Professional Cleaning Services, LLC in the funded amount of $184,008. Item number 28 is a resolution approving change number one to contract number 12175, Locksmith Services with Quality Safe &amp; Lock Company, Inc. in the funded amount of $50,000. And our last item is number 29, a resolution approving change number four to contract number 11928, mobile document on-site shredding services with Vital Records Control Incorporated in the funded amount of $27,000. Madam Chairwoman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Fantastic job, Madam Comptroller. This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Jones. Let's please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for the MLGW fiscal consent.
Canale, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Councilwoman Robinson, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That item was moved by Patrice Robinson and seconded by Carlisle. Canale. I messed him up, intentionally.
Welcome to the crowd. Thank you very kindly for the clarity. Moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Canale. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, let's please go to the add-on items, beginning with item number 35.
Item number 35 is a resolution to amend the Council FY22 grant allocations. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilman Ford. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This item was held... or this item came before the Budget Committee and was received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
Very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Colvet. Please clear the screens for item number 35. May cast your votes.
Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Item number 35 passed. Item number 36?
Item number 36 is a resolution to amend the Council FY22 Item number 36 is a resolution to amend the council FY22 grant allocations, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, there is a request for same night minutes.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. Councilman Jones, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this item was held, was heard in budget meeting earlier today, received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 36. You may cast your votes, council members. Duly noted.
Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 36, pass. Item number 37, please?
Item number 37 is a resolution to amend the council FY22 grant allocations, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Johnson, there is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very kindly, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this item was heard in the Budget Committee meeting today, received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Covet, let's please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 37. May cast our votes.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes. Councilmember Ford also wants to vote yes on item number 37.
Item number 37, pass. Item number 38, please, Madam Comptroller?
Item number 38 is a resolution to amend the council FY22 grant allocations, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Canale, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Jones, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this item was heard in Budget Committee, received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Covet, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 38. You may cast your votes at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 38, pass. Item number 39, please?
Item number 39 is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $22 million aggregate principal amount of general improvement refunding bonds, Series 2022A, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division, there is a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very kindly, item, I mean Vice Chair Jones, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this item was heard in Budget Committee, received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 39. You may cast your votes at this time, council members.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 39, passes. Item number 40?
Item number 40 is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $255 million aggregate principal amount of general improvement refunding bonds, Series 2022B, federally taxable, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Vice Chair Jones, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this item was heard in Budget Committee, received a favorable recommendation and also moved.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 40. Council members, you may vote at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, item number 41?
Item number 41 is an appointment to the Memphis and Shelby County Airport Authority, Albert Glenn.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
Thank you very kindly, this has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Covet, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 41. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Item number 42, please?
Item number 42 is an appointment to the Memphis Board of Ethics, Carolyn Goodwin Willett, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
Thank you very kindly, this item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 42. May cast your votes at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 42, passes. Item number 43?
Item number three is also an appointment to the Memphis Light Gas and Water Commission, Cheryl Persky, there's also requests for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
Thank you very kindly, this item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 43. You may vote at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Item number 44, please?
Item number 44 is also an appointment to the Memphis Light Gas and Water Commission, Carl J. Person, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 44. May cast your votes.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 44, passes. Item number 45?
Item number 45 is a reappointment to the Memphis Light Gas and Water Commission, Leon Dixon, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 45. You may cast your votes at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 45, pass. Madam Comptroller, item number 46, please?
Item number 46 is a reappointment Memphis Light Gas and Water Commission, Mitch Graves, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we cast our votes for item number 46. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passes. Item number 47?
Item number 47 is a Memphis Light Gas and Water Commission appointment, Michael Pullman, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 47.
Thank you. Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Morgan, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Item number 47, pass. Item number 48?
Item number 48 is a resolution in opposition to send a bill 2440, House Bill 2569, of the 113th session of the General Assembly, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Jones, there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilwoman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 48. You may cast your votes at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Item number 49?
Item number 49 is a joint resolution of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners and Memphis City Council requesting the state of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee General Assembly increase funding to the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, for regular roadside trash cleanup along interstates I-40, I-55, I-269, I-22, and I-240, as well as interstate highways such as Highway 78, 70, and other designated state highways within Shelby County, Tennessee. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Memphis City Council, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilwoman Warren, please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 49. You may cast your votes at this time.
Canale, yes, Carlisle, yes, Collette, yes, Easter Thomas, yes, Ford, yes, Johnson, yes, Jones, yes, Robinson, yes, Smiley, yes, Warren, yes, Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Item number 50?
Item number 50 is a resolution urging the United States federal government to urgently address the student loan crisis in an act of plan to cancel federal student loan debt. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by council members Warren, Easter Thomas, Johnson, Logan, Robinson, and Smiley, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and also move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren. Councilman Carlisle is in the queue.
I'm just so confused while we're doing this stuff. Like, what are we doing here?
Thank you very kindly.
Hold on, I have the floor.
Okay.
I've got the floor. I just don't know what we're really trying to accomplish. I mean, I guess if we want to make political statements, but this is a highly complex subject matter that has trillion-dollar implications, and it's not theoretical. I mean, you might as well go ahead and toss on here, cancel all Fannie and Freddie Mac mortgages and free healthcare and, I mean, all this stuff, it's a serious, yeah, that would be great, and then we wouldn't have any sort of debt or treasury issues, right? The 10-year yield would skyrocket, you'd have hyperinflation, you'd crash the global economy. It's not a joke. And so, I just don't know as the Memphis City Council why we waste our time weighing into things that don't actually help people from our dais to here. Like, I don't understand, we talked about this earlier today, where we could be talking about the Memphis city budget and how to fund equitable transportation, but we're railing off letters to the federal government like they actually care. So, I'll be abstaining from this vote, and I hope that we stop doing this stuff, so you guys can get political wins with some random circle because they want to see you fire a letter off to Joe Biden like he's going to read it. I yield the floor.
Councilman Covet, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Councilman Carlisle stole my thunder. I'm in complete agreement because, I mean, guys, where do we stop? If not Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, how about we pay me back for all my student loans beginning in 1992? At some point, at some point, what are we doing here? And my answer is, is we're sending a letter that's not going to get read, all right? But anyway, cast your votes, do whatever you're going to do, anyone.
Councilman Jones?
The only way that the council speaks is through resolution. And for the hard-working, middle-class, and lower-income people who, the only way that they can have an education is through student debt, any type of relief for them would be appreciated, and that's the majority of the people in this community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Covet?
Thank you. I understand people need help, and I needed help to get through college, and I have worked my butt off in the construction industry to pay my debts. Now, I understand folks need help, some do, I get it, but I had to go without because I paid my debts. Period.
Councilman Warren? Thank you very kindly, I'll see anyone else in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number 50.
Canali abstained. Carlisle abstained. Colback, no. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Item number fifty, pass. Item number fifty-one?
Item number fifty-one is a resolution establishing a public hearing date for approving a finding of conditions necessary for community redevelopment and amending the Community Redevelopment Workable Program Strategic Plan of the Community Redevelopment Agency, District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the Community Redevelopment Agency, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Ford?
Thank you, Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
This item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Warren. Please clear the screen so we may vote on item number fifty-one.
Thank you.
Canali, yes. Colback, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passes. Item number fifty-two?
Item number fifty-two is a resolution to transfer and appropriate funds in the amount of $197,579 for training audiovisual equipment. CIP Project Number FS22102, District Seven, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Vice Chair Jones?
Was hurt in committee today, received a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number fifty-two.
Canali, yes. Colback, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passes. Item number fifty-three?
Item number fifty-three is a resolution requesting the approval for the sale of a city-owned parcel located at 1799 Box Town Road, Shelby County, Tennessee. Further described as parcel ID number 08201000050, District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by General Services. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Smiley, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
This item has been moved by Councilman Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. You may cast your votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colback, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passes. Madam Controller, may we please proceed to the regular agenda, beginning with item number thirty?
Thank you. That will also take us to an appointment to the Memphis Board of Ethics, James Crone.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman of Committee Met recommends approval and I so move.
This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren. Please clear the screen so we may vote on item number thirteen.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colback, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passes. Item number thirty-one?
Item number thirty-one is an ordinance to amend Section 2.20-5 of the Code of Ortenances of the City of Memphis pertaining to contract and salaries of the MLGW Division to raise the amount of contracts and salaries or compensation for employees or others requiring City Council approval to $500,000 and $180,000 respectively. For third and final reading, ordinance number 5819 is sponsored by MLGW Division.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee met. We made no recommendation, and I so move. Thank you.
This item has been properly moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Smiley. We have a speaker regarding this item, Corey Hester. Could you please come forward? State your name and address for the record. Did you desire to speak, Mr. Hester?
Thank you. You leave one for Shanayn?
Madam Controller, could you set the clock for two minutes, please? Two minutes? Thank you very kindly. If you would state your name and address for the records?
Corey Hester. I'm the B.S. member of IBW Local 1288. Young, my address is 3787 St. Elbow, Memphis, Tennessee, 38128.
Thank you.
I rise today to speak against the ordinance of changing the limit amount from $50,000 to $500,000. As you can see in the proposal that was done by our company, High Road Strategies, we relooked at the Baker Tillis report, and actually, our consultant recommended not to change the funded, the contract limited amount from $50,000 to $500,000. On page eighteen, you can see, I also recommend that we keep the community offices open. Do not close them. On page twenty-four on our presentation, you can see that it talks about the poverty rate, how closing the community office will affect our community. And on page fourteen, forty-one, High Road Strategies, along with IBW's recommendation, that the City Council does not raise the contract limits, because if you do that, who's going to control the oversight of MLGW? That is one of the biggest problems that we have now. And actually, on page fifty-five, you can see the past President Jerry Collins disagreed with the Baker Tillis report. He actually stated that it is not in the best interest of MLGW. So I would ask this body today to not pass this ordinance. Keep the funded amount as the same. IBW is not opposed or not trying to stop MLGW from operating. However, we do believe that that limit should be raised to an amount in which MLGW can be held accountable for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Jones, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Buck, I wasn't, I was out of town when this came before the MLGW Committee, but my question is, what is the current level for compensation and salaries that have to be approved by the City Council?
Do you have anyone from MLGW that'd like us to speak regarding this? Please state your name and address for the records.
Good evening, Council. J.T. Young, President and CEO of MLGW, 220 South Main Street. The current level is $90,000. Just to be clear, this is for external hires, so it requires anything $90,000 and above to be reviewed.
Okay. I just wasn't sure of that number. I wanted to make sure.
In contract?
Contract, $50,000.
Councilman Carla?
Yeah.
You have an addition?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we modify this and modify this to raise the amount from $50,000 to $250,000, not $500,000. Yes. Yes.
So, we have approval of $500,000?
She's just reading the language.
Okay, and you would like to raise it from $50,000 to $250,000?
Well, I would like to amend our ordinance to have the amount for contracts to be $250,000 instead of $500,000.
You have a second?
Yes, Carla.
Councilman Carlisle, you're in the queue.
Well, I guess, Madam Chair, the first thing is, is there any objection to that, to that motion? I'll see to the maker of the motion.
Well, I, we, I, what I don't have, or the background information, is when it was set at $50,000. But if we're looking at, if we're looking, well, regardless of when it was, but I understand that if we're indexing it for inflation, prices of the goods and services that they procure have gone up during that period of time. And I know that salaries are different from goods and services, but if we are only increasing the salary by two times, why are we increasing the contracts by 10 times? And so, I wasn't in the meeting. I don't know how many contracts would be affected at the $500,000, how many would be at the $250,000. But one of the things I want to go back to, Mr. Young, during one of the presentations, this might have been some time ago, it might have been right after the Baker Tillis report, it was still a concern of mine that the logjam was not the council. It was more so the internal operations. So whether we had it at $250,000, $500,000, a million, it would not speed it up. The approval or the procurement of these things at those levels, it, to me, operationally, and it could be one of those things to where if MLGW needs to change the timing of their meetings to coincide with what the council does, but the $250,000, the $500,000, the $50,000, to me, it wasn't the, that wasn't the issue. It was more so the internal operations or the workflow that had effect on this versus the $250,000, or the $50,000, or the $500,000 level. And so, that's the basis of it.
Yeah, Dana Jean, MLGW's CFO. At the committee meeting back on, I believe, February 1st, or there...
Right, I was at town.
We presented some data and showed essentially, at the $50,000 level, we did a three-year look, and at the $50,000 level, for all the three years, about 650 contracts and resolutions would come to this body. If you move that limit to $500,000, you would be at about 313. So you cut it basically in half, a little bit more than half, and the dollar amount that would no longer be directly related to these resolutions would only be reduced by 5%, meaning that the vast majority of the spending would still be under the purview of the board and the council. If it were modified to $250,000, that would be roughly 40% reduction in the number of items that would come to this body, and about 3% to 3.5% of the dollars, if that helps.
Yeah, it does. But colleagues, most of MLGW's items that come before us, the one who spends the most time on this is Ms. Snipes, reading it. So, everything is mostly approved as a consent agenda by us. So whether it's set for $50,000, $50,250, it's not the deliberations or what the council's actions are in holding this up. I can understand if we came to these meetings and we heard MLGW, after it's read, we spend 10, 50, well, a half an hour or an hour discussing this. That's not the case. It's approved, it's read into the record, we approve it. Very seldom, and, you know, I don't think we need to go through the exercise of how many times have we actually pulled an item on the MLGW fiscal consent agenda, deliberated, discussed it over years. He said two.
Maybe six total, but like...
Exactly. We're talking over the course of a year. So, I just don't see how it's this council, this body, and having the limit at 50, then taking it to 500, is all of a sudden going to make us more efficient. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Carlisle?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think we agree on some things. What I go back to, and I'll address the salaries too, so, just for Councilman Jones, because I know he wasn't here, and Ms. Jones, if, Councilman Jones, should you need her to, can validate what I'm about to say. But basically, the jobs that are left over, over 100, for 180 and over, are basically the C-suite. I think it's six to eight jobs, roughly speaking. Is that right, Ms. Jones? Thirteen jobs, sorry. So there's 13 jobs that would have to come before us. The majority of jobs that we're talking about at the $90,000 range and up, or where they are, are like IT member X, and that individual's never named. It's a job description. And so, one of the valid points that they gave me that I agree with, in an intense job market, if that job is offered to an individual, it has to go before their board and then come on our consent agenda, that individual has to wait four to six weeks before they've got certainty that the job can be theirs. And so, a lot of times, we can lose a potential employee that we want to hire because they didn't want to hang around and wait to hear whether or not they got the job. That was the reasoning, and it made sense to me. And to your point, I think I'm the only person, since I've been here two years, that asked Dana a couple times for job descriptions, and after a few reads on the job description, it ultimately made pretty clear sense to me that they need the ability, from an HR standpoint, to be able to offer these jobs. And while we still have oversight on any, what I would call higher-level manager and C-suite member would still come before this body, but I don't need to get involved in hiring an industrial engineer. So, that was, that was my reasoning, that was the reasoning for that 180 number.
Just, Carla, if you notice, I didn't mention anything in my amendment about the salary part of it.
You just had brought why it went up 10 times, and I just want to get it... And I know you were raps at that meeting.
But, the point is, is that, and I'm sorry to interrupt your time, I recognize the salary part of it.
I just wanted, I wanted to clarify.
My motion could have been to say, hey, take it down to 150. No. I'm totally okay with the salary part.
You just made mention of I wanted to get it back on the record. So, for the half a million dollars, here are the few ways I look at it. First off, this report, although I was catty, and I shouldn't have been, it's been a long day, was produced almost a year ago, and this has been up in committee twice in three readings, and it gets dropped on our desk right before the deliberation. And then, you know, it's like, here's a report that disagrees with that, which I don't appreciate. If you really wanted us to have information to make a formal decision, you would have given us this almost a month and a half ago, so we could have read about it, deliberated it, versus handing us a stack of information at the last minute and saying, here's my evidence that everything in the Baker Tillis report is wrong. So, in my opinion, that's a poor strategic error. One of the things about our procurement strategies are, is that we are prolonged in the way in which contracts are approved. And the Baker Tillis study, if you want to go back and look at it, goes on and on to talk about the cost of goods and doing business and the length of our procurement process. One of the things, actually, that I thought about today after listening to... One of the things, actually, that I thought about today after listening to Mr. Graves and Mr. Dixon, and some of the questions from my colleagues about minority contracts, is this: With the size of contracts and length of time it takes to approve, I almost guarantee you, we are doing harm to minority contractors that want to do business with MLGW, but don't have the ability to float and hang around when they bid, right? So you have X number of manpower and X number of ability to do procurement as a contractor, and you're going to place bids out into the marketplace for certain suppliers and vendors in hopes that you're awarded that contract. Eventually, you reach capacity, and you no longer can bid until that capacity is alleviated. So if I'm bidding on an MLGW contract and say something else that maybe is a lesser contract, I have to wait around to see if I'm going to get awarded that MLGW contract, and it's at the mercy of the Memphis City Council. So I'll ask this question very directly to JT or Dana, whoever wants to take it: Would streamlining our procurement process by allowing items under $250,000 or half a million dollars benefit minority contractors because they could go through the consent agenda process?
It would, and, and we actually have some examples of where it's been that we, because we ask vendors to, to hold their prices, you know, for 180 days, so to the.
Six months! Six months!
Yeah, so we ask them to hold those prices, and so this process, just to be clear, adds essentially six weeks or more to that, to that process, and in, and in this environment where we have a need for competitive, relatively quick turnaround, we're trying to get better with bureaucracy, and this is a way for us to do that, and so to your, to, yeah, that's for sure.
So that's one area. And the second that I'll say is, this is the Memphis City Council, no future council is bound. We really should give this an opportunity and, and have a litmus test. If you feel like, after a year of doing this, you've lost complete and total control of the procurement process, great, let's bring an ordinance back, and we can bring it back down. But to sit here on your hands and say no, when the evidence that's out there and the data's out there suggesting that we're costing MLGW millions of dollars, which means your ratepayers' money and their rate, it, it, it's just not sound judgment. I think we're affecting like 5% of the overall budget through this thing, but we know it could save millions of dollars for our ratepayers? Like, this idea that oversight and control is completely lost is just a bad narrative. And somebody asked the question about why we are and when this happened. I won't make Attorney Wade come up here, but I'll be honest with you, our charter started, I think, at $5,000, and it went up, and then it came down because there were certain individuals that wanted to deliver political pain to MLGW. So the question, I guess, for my colleagues is, is do we want to continue to deliver political pain? Are you actually interested in efficiency and proper oversight and delivering the best business and best, what is it, the way forward for our ratepayers? You're being offered a way to save them millions of dollars, and we're saying no, but we don't, no one's yet to put forward a really good reason for saying no. So I'm supportive of the $250,000, if that gets me to seven, I think half a million dollars is the right number. But the idea that we're just not going to do anything, and that's going to deliver a benefit to the ratepayers of Memphis, is asinine. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Warren?
I agree with Councilman Carla on this particular issue. I have a question for MLGWN. It's my understanding that the real time delay is not just getting it to us when we vote, it's like all the additional steps you have to take with those lower-cost contracts to get them to the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes, it's all of the above.
So, but that takes more time than it does the six weeks, or whatever it is, to get to the council. It's like getting it ready for the council. If you could just move on it and not have to get it ready for a council presentation, is that worth the time delay?
If we could give our vendors the assurance that we can be responsive in a timely manner that meets their needs, it's, it would be beneficial for vendors and certainly for our customers, so absolutely.
So sort of the way it would work is if you had a contract, and I'm going to say under $500,000, because I think for 2% to go from $250,000 to $500,000, and I'm going to try to talk my fellow councilmen into rescinding his motion, but if for that, just 2% difference, okay, how many numbers of contracts are there? It seems, as I recall, the vast majority of our contracts are high-dollar contracts as far as money's concerned, but we have a lot more low-numbered contracts, like under $500,000, where the actual numbers of contracts are, is that correct?
Yeah, I think the delta's a little over 200 contracts, because Dana's got that data, he can share that.
Yeah, so right now, at the $50,000 limit, as I mentioned a minute ago, over a three-year period, we brought 644 items to this body. If you cut that threshold, or if you raise that threshold to $500,000, you basically cut it in half. So the advantages are, of course, the time involved in the board resolutions and taking to the board, taking to the council, but there's also a fairly significant amount of staff time that's involved in developing all the resolutions. And if we get this passed in some form, that's going to free up some staff time to work on other things that are more productive, frankly, so we can get on with improving our service, improving our liability, so.
How much more quickly would contracts under $500,000 actually be signed, initiated, and begun?
I would say we would reduce it probably at least eight weeks.
Eight weeks. Okay, so, you know, in my mind, you know, I'm going to support this resolution if Councilman Jones wants to continue it, but in my mind, I think $500,000 seems the right amount, and I would recommend that we go there, and I'll leave, I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Colvet?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. President Young, six months? In my days back in landscaping business, you can't keep price for six months, that's, that's, that, that dog don't hunt. Sorry, I'll use a technical term. That won't work, sorry. Is there a universe where you could potentially change that to, say, three months? I mean, 90 days? I mean, what does the city hold bids open for? I think it's like 90 days?
I don't, I can't.
I seem to think 90. Is, is there a way you could work on that goal of cutting it down?
Well, we have, we are, we're doing that, and this is part of that, so absolutely, to the extent that we can get an approval tonight, that's going to help us tremendously.
So I vote for this, and we're going to get it down to three months, just what might be a fair target time to achieve that?
And again, this is more Dana, that's more Dana's question for, because the system works on that, we'll, we'll do our best to get that time cut in half, and do our best to shoot for that as a target. So we've got, again, it's, it's, it's a very cumbersome process, very cumbersome.
Cumbrous or not, 90 days, it can't be that hard. And I respectfully, obviously, we disagree. Dana, you have thought, you want to share on that?
No, I, I think that's a reasonable target for us. In addition to this, we're also looking at our internal processes and trying to be more efficient. We went through a period of time, for example, when our contract staff was working at about half the people. We've now filled all those positions, and so that's helped as well. We're also trying to implement some software solutions that are going to speed the process up. So this is one dimension of a multi-dimensional approach to improve our efficiency and our speed of, of operation.
So when can we expect it, then?
When can you expect?
Yeah.
Hopefully, after this vote, we'll.
I can be in favor of this vote. When, when can I expect it?
I would say probably within the next 60 days, we should be able to.
60 days it is, my friend. All right, let's go with that. Colleagues, I could, I can go with that, if we can, because, because as small business goes, there's no way, back in the day, I could have ramped up and stayed ramped for six months. You get it to three, and then I think it's something we can work with. The $250,000, colleagues, I think is a pretty good idea, and the reason I say that is, I recall several subcontracts for tree trimming, and given the recent storm, I think they were in the $300,000 or $400,000 range, so it was very beneficial to me to know when these contracts were going out, how they were going out, and how they were being set up. So I can go with this $250,000, and that being the case, Madam Chairman, if there is no opposition, can we go ahead and just make this a friendly amendment, and go ahead and proceed on to the main motion?
We have two other people in the queue that would like to be recognized.
My bad, then I yield the floor.
Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for an opposition to the amendment to keep it $500,000. If it is the will of the body to move it to $250,000, I will then vote in favor of this ordinance as amended at $250,000. But I, I just think that's the right amount, and, and dropping it down to $250,000 really doesn't do much. The $300,000 to $400,000 contracts that Councilman Colvet just referenced in terms of tree trimming, all the more reason that they shouldn't be sitting on our docket, waiting to be passed with no debate, no oversight, no discussion, we didn't really do any work on them, the people were just waiting on it to go through our process. So it's not our deliberations that slow up the process, it is our actual process of meeting every two to three weeks, it being on the docket, and then two to three weeks later, we're also passing the minutes. That, that's what's slowing it up. And again, we belabor the point that in my six years, again, I think, I think we've had five or six items that have been polled, individual council members have engaged MLGW on more items than that behind the scenes, to ask questions, and the, you know, ahead of time when our agenda's released on Thursday. But again, all of this is always open to the public at the MLGW board meetings. And our process ought to be in the best interest of the ratepayers. It was, it was a real simple question when we were confirming reappointments and new appointments earlier to MLGW, and just making sure, I think, as we're deliberating on MLGW budgets, on policy, on contracts, that the bottom line has to be what is in the best interest of the ratepayers. And here, we're, we're balancing almost kind of a, I would say, a, a false argument, or at least a very weak argument on transparency, because I don't think we lose any transparency, I don't think we lose any authority, we still have over 300 contracts that will come before us, verse a very tangible amount of millions of dollars, as well as the opportunity to get more competitive bids from small businesses through our MLGW process. That was another thing we talked about with the reappointments, where how disappointing it is, and everybody's pulling their hair out and working harder to try to figure out how to get more competitive bids in our procurement process. More bids means more options, more options means the chance of finding a better option for the ratepayer. And I think that has to be the priority and the focus when we're talking about this. And again, this isn't forever. If, if we see something that is going wrong with it, if we see something that is askew or awry, we can always bring this back up. But I think we should give it a shot, we should monitor our procurement process and, and how well we're doing with competitive bids. I would like to see a comparison of before and after, if we can start tracking that, if we're successful in passing that, and have a report in it in 90 days and six months, or in a year, about the impact that this change has had before this next council term ends, for us to be able to look at and deliberate on. So I'm going to stick with it at $500,000, I think it's in the best interest of the ratepayers for multiple reasons, and I don't think it has anything or any detriment to our ability to oversight and to oversee the work that is going on at MLGW. Thank you.
And just to help mitigate any concerns around that, as you all may know, just to reiterate, we are planning to provide the quarterly updates and information that will contain what you talked about, plus any of those contracts above $50,000 that you would have otherwise seen, so you will still see those on a quarterly basis as well.
Thank you very kindly. Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Just, colleagues, looking, going back.
Looking at the numbers more closely, 650 contracts at $50,000, 313 at $500,000, and so I just did, Mr. Jeans indicated that, that we'd look at a 40% reduction if we looked at $250,000 in between there, so that comes out to 390, so 390 versus 313 being the, the difference in the threshold there. If we do take it to $250,000, considering that most of them are approved on the MLGWN fiscal consent agenda, I still see it being immaterial if we take it from 500 to 250. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. My question is, a comment was made that everything is still going to be overseen by the Memphis Gas and Water Board. It's my understanding that you won't even take anything to your board that's under $250,000 or $500,000, so it would not be in a case where everything would be seen. That opportunity is taken away, correct?
That's correct. We would have the same level of approval at the board and the council, but again, we would have the quarterly report showing everything that was $50,000 or above that would be transparent to both bodies. In addition, if you recall, in the Baker-Tillison study, Baker-Tillison recommended the $500,000 level for the board, and actually recommended that the, the council not have purview at all over that, and so we felt like $500,000 was appropriate for both, both bodies.
Okay, I appreciate that. Colleagues, another thing I would add, after listening to the considerations, is why do we not put it on a one-year trial, rather than necessarily send it in motion, and then they having to come back, or we have to make a decision if we like, not like it? Now, put it only one-year trial. That's a motion to move it to a one-year trial.
Councilman Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, are we voting now on the amendment? Is that what we vote now? So the next vote will be on the amendment, so we could vote against the amendment to go to $250,000, and then, then we can vote on it? Is that how it's going to go when we vote?
I'll withdraw my second. I think we should stick to 500, so if there's a second.
I'll second the amendment for $250,000.
So, so we're going to vote on the amendment, then? Okay.
Okay. Councilman Colvet, would you like to speak prior to the vote?
Thank you very much. To close out that tree trimming conversation, it was contracts long before the season was due, and, and again, just the reason I liked it was, it, we did it, in fact, to ask the questions and pull it out and talk about it, because to my eternal shame, we agreed to cut their tree trimming budget, and this was before you, JT. So I vividly remember that, and I don't want to go up to 500, I want to keep it at $250,000, like we've been discussing, because there are things I do see that are, I'm going to flag and ask about. Anyway, such as it is, let's call the vote.
Well, I got any right point of just a question.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
With every, Mr. Jeans, you made a reference that this is a recommendation of the Baker-Tillison study. Are there any recommendations that you did not accept under the Baker-Tillison study? Or did you take it boilerplate? Because my, my, my point is, are we cherry picking items within the Baker-Tillison that fit your narrative, but then those that don't, you're not using those? So are we using everything from the Baker-Tillison, saying, you brought us this, we're taking everything in there? And if so, why not? Why, or why not?
So, again, on this particular.
That's, that's not the question, Mr. Jeans. The question is, are there recommendations in the Baker-Tillison study that you all are not accepting and bringing back to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all, Mr. Jeans, I don't want to hear anything else. Thank you.
All right, Madam Comptroller. Oh, we have Carla back in the queue.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. The mic?
I, I appreciate the question, and, and I did this last week as the dramatic moment or last meeting, and, and I lost to JB. But there, there are, that's a qualifying language. What you're talking about are things that are within our purview and within our control that can help the process, and we're going to make a decision, but, you know, to say that, did you blanket take everything boilerplate and stomach it? I mean, there may be qualifying language, and if we want to have, and we have been having ongoing discussions with MLGW about the things they are and are not implementing, and where they are in the implementation process, and I'm sure they're happy to come back and explain that, but I don't think it's fair to, to, to have this, you know, this defense lawyer moment where it's like, Your Honor, I just want a yes or no question, treat him as a hostile witness, and like, shut him down, and come on. So anyway, with that, I call the question on the amendment.
Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, special item, one, we have an amendment to reduce the compensation for, the compensation contract salaries for employees from $500,000 to $250,000.
No, contracts, just.
The contracts, from $500,000 to $250,000.
Yes.
It's been moved by Jones, seconded by Colvet. So a yes vote is to reduce it from $500,000 to $250,000 for the contracts.
Canali, yes. Carla, no. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, no. Robinson, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, no.
This item passed. The special item passed. Let's go back and vote on item number 31 as amended.
Item 31 as amended. Carlisle, yes. Covet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, no. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Item number 31 passed as amended. Item number 32?
Item number, item number 32 is a substitute ordinance, adding a payment, a method of payment provision, and defining commercial property to Chapter 41 City Code of Ordinances, Wreckers, and Towing Operators. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number 5818 is sponsored by Councilman Jones and Councilman Smiley.
Councilman Smiley, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee may, uh, we're to take whatever action this council deems advisable.
Okay, this item has been moved by Councilman Smiley, seconded by Councilman Jones. I don't see anyone in the queue. Please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 32.
Covet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Ask that we have this item because it was held, pulled from the minutes three weeks ago that we have it, uh, there's a request, I would like to require same night minutes for item number 31.
Any objections? No objections? This item was...
Same night minutes for number 30?
32.
I'm sorry, 32. Yes, 32.
Okay. Item number 33.
Thank you, we noted that for the records.
Item number 33, please.
Item number 33 is a resolution appropriating construction funds in the amount of 410,000 for project number EN 01111, traffic signal improvement to the intersection of Peabody and Belvedere, District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by the Engineering Division.
Councilman Smiley, you may be rec, Councilman Smiley, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee may recommend approval or not, so move.
This item has been moved by Councilman Smiley, seconded by Councilman Canaly. Please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 33.
Carlisle, yes. Covet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
Item number 33 passed. Item number 40, 34?
Item number 34 is a resolution in support of House Bill 2812 of the 113th General Assembly. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilman Smiley and Councilwoman Easter Thomas. It was held from March 1st.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
I have my mic on, sir. Uh, Chairwoman, the committee may recommend approval or not, so move.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilwoman Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Warren. Please clear the screen so we may vote on item number 34.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, Epstein. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. And Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen is yes. Councilwoman Jones is yes.
Covet.
Mr. Covet is yes.
Thank you, this item passed. Vice, this brings us to the same night minute items. Vice Chairman Jones, would you please read the same night minutes into the record?
Madam Chair, uh, yeah, I have that, but we're going to, did we not add the council grant program to the regular meeting agenda for tonight?
You already hit it.
No, we held it.
Individual grant discussions by each council member?
Do you need to have it all written on the next meeting?
Well, yes. It, Madam Chair, uh, I would like to suspend the rules so that we can add the city council community grant application to this night's agenda.
What item number is that?
Uh, this would have to be item number 54.
Is it 54?
So... So, Councilman Jones, do you want it to look like...
No. No. Yes.
So is it item number 54? And we also added item number 32?
32, yes.
Without objection. Councilmembers, is there anyone that object adding item number 54 to the same night minutes?
For reading it in the record and voting on it? Did I vote on it? Read it.
Madam Chair, it was a...
Think it was ready for our discussion the way it was set. So, you know, in my mind, I thought it was gonna come back after Councilman Jones had worked on it and brought it back from the discussions in the committee. So I would object to suspending the rules and with same night minutes. Thank you.
Councilman Warren, the, uh, the changes that were recommended in the committee meeting, they were made and they're part of this document. So we've extracted, you know, how we talked about, the percentage of that part has been taken out. Uh, we've also talked about...
So would you be acceptable for putting it on the agenda and not making it same night minutes, so we can have a chance to review it, uh, afterwards?
Well, I would...
What's the rush?
I mean, guys, we don't follow this program anyway. We're wise ourselves. Like, today, we amended the council grant program for like 15 different people. Like, what are we doing? You guys are gonna vote on this great, we don't follow it anyway, it's gonna go in my special file account right there. We amended throughout the year, and people can money whatever they wanna give us, 50123, so you guys do your own.
All right, is, is there an objection to adding item number 54 to same, uh, to same night minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we have two objections.
Okay. So it'll be on the next meeting then.
Okay.
I'm talking about it tonight.
If you remove the recommendation, now, could you please read the same night minutes into the record?
Madam Chair, the same night minutes for tonight are items 6, 16, 32, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, and also move.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Warren. Please clear the screen so we may vote on our same night minutes. Uh, seconded by...
Johnson, Johnson, 21 minutes.
Right. Please cash your votes for same night minutes.
That's number 32. Yes.
Canaly, yes. Carlisle, no. Covet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Jones, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Sergeant-at-Arms, are these all of the cards? All right, we're here for the comment cards. Says, uh, Reverend Gordon Myers, should please come, followed by Carl Richards, and Please state your name and address for the records.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Myers, 11167 Orgill Cove, Arlington, Tennessee, 38002. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. In the, in the Christian tradition, we're in the middle of the season of Lent, and a strong focus in Lent is repentance. Repentance actually means to take another direction, turn around. The discipline of Lent is also its promise, and the promise is that it doesn't always have to be the same way it was in the past. We don't have to get locked into a cycle of doing the same thing over and over again, especially things that are harmful to us. The way of the world is that people with power and resources use that power and resources to get more power and resources, often at the expense of people who have little power or resources. It's, it's the motivation behind territorial conquest and slavery and crime, and basically all the evil that infests the world. In failing to recognize the God-given inherent value of each and every brother and sister of God's creation, we tend to think of us and them separating ourselves from one another. The Constitution captures this image in the language in that all are powered by their Creator and endowed with certain unalienable rights, including life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, to restrain the power of the pursuit of profit, power, or privilege by some at the expense of others. And they all address virtually the same kind of thing with, within our democracy, within our system of morals and ethics, within the systems of our faith traditions, calling people to a higher understanding of themselves than that the world might have. And throughout history, sadly, corporations like the TVA have often been able to municipal, cull up municipalities to assist in the perpetuation of injustice by making you all co-conspirators. But it doesn't have to be that way. We've got a whole bunch of people...
I'm sorry, but you're out of time.
...and willing to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Richards?
Leo Arnott with the West Tennessee Memphis Chapter of Private Reality Project. Tonight, I wanna thank you again for your recent ordinance that effectively stopped the Valia Pipeline in partnership with MCAP and the Protector Aquifer. That battle was won. The war is still on. The bill on March 2 that was proposed would have basically completely undermined your good work and taken all of your authority away to oversee energy developments in our fine city and county. The battle is still on because that bill, which originally was just supposed to be a study, was hijacked, and in a very short period of time, two weeks ago, they added the conditions that would basically take your authority away. It's got to be stopped. Uh, I wanna thank Councilwoman Robinson, who initially initiated a, an attempt, a resolution to oppose that bill, and with all due respect to Attorney Wade, uh, yes, that amendment that came through only after pressure from Memphis last week did result in the protection of the wellheads, but that's only 20% of our aquifer area. 80% is still exposed. You have got to protect that aquifer. And the only way to do it now is to basically support an attempt to get the, uh, bill delayed at least, and you can do that by asking Representative Camper, who is on the Commerce Committee where this legislation came through, uh, ask her to ask for a summer study or have it referred to the Taser Committee, which will give us time to build our case against the entire bill at this point as it's proposed. Because, yes, you save the wellheads, but the aquifer is still highly vulnerable, and your authority will be gone for future, for future years, for future projects. All 95 counties will lose their power to oversee where these explosive facilities will be located. You will no longer have the authority to determine your self-determination as to where future energy infrastructure goes. Please stop this. You can, you can take, uh, Robin, Robinson's resolution and modify it. Go for either summer study or Taser, but do not let that law pass. Thank you.
Carl Richards?
My name is Carl Richards, 434 Memphis, 38120. I'm here representing the Sierra Club, and I'm also going to speak on two items. First, I'd like to mention this, uh, this House Bill 2246 that was, uh, rolled from today to next, next Tuesday for consideration by the House Commerce Committee. And I just wanna state that, you know, this council knows better than probably any council across the state of Tennessee about the difficulties and considerations that go into, in gas and oil, in oil pipeline, uh, construction. Uh, this bill would eliminate that ability to have any input, any meaningful input, even eliminate this council in passing any resolution related to that. This bill, you know, this is not about stopping pipelines, this is about stopping local input and control. This thing is overly broad. It, it connects everything, anywhere from huge pipe, uh, uh, storage facilities down to wholesale, even retail outlets, a gas station across the street is, is, falls under the, the passage of this bill. I urge you to definitely, to consider passing a resolution that would, that would stop this thing. Second item, I just wanna mention the, uh, TVA with respect to coal ash. Uh, the, the good news is that the toxic coal ash is moving, it's moving to an entombment in the South Shelby County, uh, landfill. The problem is that TVA has rejected any information about how they arrived at that decision. They've avoided bringing that information to the council, and certainly have avoided bringing it to the communities that are impacted by the trucking, over 200 trucks a day that move through, uh, these communities in terms of, uh, filling the, where the fill is taken and, and where it's going. Uh, please, uh, consider telling EVA to conduct us, uh, a supplemental environmental impacts statement on that issue. Thank you very much.
Dennis Lynch, followed by Brandy Price.
Can I request an extra minute, please? I have...
No, sir, we have to be fair to everyone. Everybody's spent a lot at two minutes. If you could state your name and address for the records, we would be most appreciative.
Uh, yes, I'm Dennis Lynch, uh, Conservation Chair for the Sierra Club, 347 North McLean in Memphis. Uh, I have four things I wanna talk about, but obviously I can't talk about all four of them. I wanna thank my friends Leo Arnott and Carl, I always think Carl Perkins, Carl Richards, um, and the issues they brought up. Those are two that I would also support and mention. But I also wanna say, the third one, next Monday, the MICA, the Memphis Interfaith Coalition on Action and Hope, along with the Sierra Club, is organizing Transit Equity Day. I have four things I want to talk about, but obviously I can't talk about all four of them. I want to thank my friends Leo Arnott and Carl. I always think Carl Perkins, Carl Richards, and the issues they brought up. Those are two that I would also support and mention. But I also want to say, the third one, next Monday, the MICA, the Memphis Interfaith Coalition on Action and Hope, along with the Sierra Club, is organizing Transit Equity Day event. You will receive information about it. We'll have online information, et cetera. It's to try to encourage your support and community support for transit and transit funding. Now, the main reason I want to be here today, and I'm already running out of time. I've sent you a letter. You all know MLGW is evaluating RFPs that have been sent in on their consideration of new power supply sources. And there's a lot of issues with the RFP and the RFP evaluation process. I want to say a few of the things that are in my letter, which you would have received earlier today. I wish I could have. I apologize that I wasn't able to send it sooner. There was just a lot of stuff I had to put in that letter. We want transparency. We want a mini PSAT to evaluate. We want evaluation criteria to have stakeholder input. We want to make sure the IRP and the RFP do not reflect thermal energy bias. We want to make sure the cost trends in the industry-
I'm sorry, you're out of time, sir.
There's more and more. Climate change is not addressed. And that's, there's so many important things.
You're out of time, sir. Thank you very kindly. Brandy Price?
You can take that. I was just-
If you could state your name and address for the records, please?
Yes, hello. My name is Brandy Price, 6571 Stockport Cove, 38141. I'm here to talk about the climate change problem that's going on. How, basically, you know, the people of Memphis, the majority of people in Memphis, they don't even know who you people are. The way y'all word your agendas and how people order talk is not very congruent in how people communicate in the society that we live in. You know, and it's very imperative that we actually talk about this issue that the gentleman just here was just talking about. How, essentially, no one has any input how the resources are being funded or how they're being researched on how energy is being used in the city. Due to climate change, we experienced some of the worst storms, winter storms, in the past few years. And we don't even have the basics, upgrades and updates for our utility system like other cities and states, like having underground energy. Our wires are iron open where they can be knocked out and displaced. And basically, forms of communication, just people just without power. Climate change is upon us today. Not tomorrow, not five years from now. If we don't do anything about it, in this short amount of timeframe, it's not only going to cost you your money, it's going to cost lives by the thousands. It's true. Climate change issues, the growing frequencies of significant events, MGM does, you must consider a future entirely based on renewable energy and resources. Please, you know, Biden has pledged to decarbonize the grid by 2030. Five, but honestly, that's not soon enough. We need these updates as soon as possible. We need the needs of the people to be answered immediately. Yes, basically, the way our energy grid is not sustainable, and we're running out of time today. Please, do something. Actually do something for the people and actually-
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Like I said, lives are at stake.
Thank you. Duffy Marie Arnott, followed by Angela Johnson.
Just a quick question. If we have two issues, we just put them together in the same-
Yes, ma'am, within the two-minute time frame.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Duffy Marie Arnott, 1662 Autumn Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee. Good evening, council members and Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the climate justice organizer with the Climate Reality Project. And first, I just wanted to say I'm standing with the community and coalition members asking you to require TVA to do a supplemental environmental impact statement for the toxic coal ash removal from the Allen Plant. That TVA is a federal power utility and should be following federal guidelines laid out by NEPA. And the EIS should be done for our site-specific location and impacts, not a justice population imposed that was hypothetical by the TVA's bounding analysis method, as was originally done. Why can't there be different phases of this project to reflect the knowledge gained from a supplemental EIS and pivot to another alternative according to the results? The community directly impacted, already known to struggle with environmental injustices from fossil fuel toxins, has a right to know the direct health impacts of this toxic coal ash removal project that a site-specific analysis from a supplemental EIS would bring. So we all know that it is true accountability and transparency. It is the just next step to require a TVA. Thank you so much for considering. The other issue is with the MLGW RFP process. I'm here because I think we would all appreciate more transparency in this process. And there is a whole new area of storage discussed called long-term duration energy storage. And the Department of Energy has been a project investing in this that would be reducing costs by ninety percent in 2030. Energy storage has the potential to accelerate full decarbonization of the electric grid. And this must be heavily considered in this planning process. There is also concern that two of the portfolios highlighted in the RFP process, six and nine, are not considering renewables enough. I hope you will consider looking into ways this RFP process can be more transparent, incorporate the community and environmental advocacy efforts. And our community input is critical for such a large planning process and for our climate. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Johnson, followed by Kimberly Davis, and then Kimberly Pearson.
Angela Johnson. My address is 492 Charter Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. So far, everyone has heard about TVA. You've heard arguments most, plenty of times before. It concerns citizens. So I don't feel the need to rehash that. Because again, I have the ability to email you all again with my concerns regarding TVA and request that you guys do seek an environmental supplemental statement. My biggest concern right now is this House Bill 2246 that is supported by Vaughn and Jaeger. My concern is, it goes beyond not only the environmental harm that it has the potential to do, but the fact that we have big Tennessee government telling local counties that their power is going to be limited, taken away. So if they're going to do that just for the sake of someone is being sponsored by outside oil entities, so they're receiving, someone is receiving money, I hate to say that, but it's coming from a citizen. I do feel that money is a motivating factor. It's why this bill is being presented. I don't think it's fair to us as citizens. I don't think it's fair to you as council members to say that this larger government entity is not going to listen to what you have to say and they don't care about what you have to say. So if they can do it with this bill, then what would be the next step? What else are they going to try to take away from local county governments? So my thing is, you have friends who sit, who are in these positions of power. You know these people personally, whether you call them every so now, so often, whether you do lunch with them. I'm asking that you reach out to them, not only as a city council representative, but as someone who is concerned about their power being taken away as a representative of the people in the local counties. Whether that's reaching out to the mayor, whether that's reaching out to Jaeger, Vaughn, any other Tennessee legislators. Please let them know that their encroaching on our local government is not appreciated because they're taking away too much power from us as a people and you as local government officials to say, what is right for Shelby County? What is right for Memphis? Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. Councilman Smiley would like to dialogue with you.
First of all, thank you for, thank you all for being here. I tell people the role of government is to build to the will of the people. I want to assure you, this council has been steadfast. And we're very well aware of the bills that are currently before the state legislator. One relating to the pipeline and one trying to eliminate programs to support minority women-owned businesses. Councilwoman Warren was in Nashville with me, along with Councilwoman Swerigen. And we've been at the state Capitol. We've been advocating, pushing back against the legislation that Representative Vaughn is attempting to do to remove authority from local government to make decisions as relates to pipeline. With that, thank you, but I do want to defer to Councilwoman Warren as well.
One of the problems that we have as a council, and from the letters we've been receiving, I'm not sure people understand, we have limited jurisdiction and power. So we can't really demand that TVA give us that study, although we want it. We can ask for it. And our only leverage with them is as we're negotiating about what we're going to be doing with our power supply in the future, we'll be paying attention to how well they answer that question. So we have asked for the study that you were mentioning, and I believe was mentioned before. And I'm waiting to see if we're going to start to see that study and those, that information released and made public. Because I think it probably needs to be redone again. And the place it can put power on them is going to be our federal government. So talking to our congressmen and to our senators at a federal level may be where we can get some pressure on TVA to release that information and to consider further study, which is what I think we need. You know, I'm glad we're moving that coal ash right now because it's sitting on a non-lined, you know, lake. So that means it's seeping down toward the aquifer. Where it's being moved, even though it's two hundred trucks going through another African-American, poor community, okay? Classic environmental racism-type decision. Even though that's happening, it's going to a lined facility that should protect us for four hundred years, is what they're telling us. But that doesn't mean it all needs to go there. You know, ten percent can go there if they just have to figure out how to put it off the aquifer. And that's another thing that we need to be asking for as citizens. So your letters, although we love having them, and we agree with you, at least I do, we need those going to your state representatives. And we need them going to your congressman and your senator and to the environmental department at the state level and to TVA. TVA needs to know that the citizens want this. So keep going, but send that stuff there. We'll listen to you, but we don't have power to respond.
Right, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate the conversation. And what you have done is appreciated. And we're going to try to do what we can as citizens. But the power that you do have, we're asking you to utilize that power that you do have within reasonable constraints, I understand. And also, there's ways you can further engage the community. Because, you know, you have select people out here who are trying to stake boots to the ground. Try to be engaged with you guys. Try to be engaged with other county officials, I mean, other city officials.
You need to take it that next level up. When you do that, because we are doing that. We were in Nashville lobbying. We have our lobbyists up there today following those bills. And we're trying everything we can do as a council to not let bad laws come out. But we don't get to vote in the State House. So we need your help.
...us as citizens so that we can engage in that fight. That's, that would be my next question.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, just-
Yeah, so, again, we appreciate that. I am just one person who is a representative and who is concerned. And this information, it does not get out to everyone. So while I hear what you're saying, please don't shoot the messenger. I am just in support of what it is that you are trying to be in support of.
And we appreciate it.
Just to prevent that, you know? But, you know, as citizens, some of us, we don't have privy to this knowledge. And that's understandable. And then, and as organizations, we are trying to work towards spreading that information. But engagement from our local officials does help as well.
Yeah, you know, do you work with Justin at all, Justin Pearson? So we've been working pretty closely with him. He's up in Nashville working on this now. So keep in that loop. And thank you very much. And we'll try to get better at getting information to you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren, and thank you, Mr. Smiley. And I do understand, but, you know, that goes for everyone. This is not an attack at anyone. This is just us stating our opinions, us voicing our concerns, doing what we feel that we can do within our powers as citizens, as voters. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you very kindly. Angela Johnson? Angela Johnson? Kimberly Davis? Kimberly Pearson? Please state your name and address for the records.
Kimberly Davis. 1753 Berwin Road is my address. And thank you all for having us today. And I do appreciate all of your hard work and all of your essence. And I want to encourage all of you as our public servants that everything you do does matter. Your voice matters. Every letter you write, every letter we write, I wouldn't be here today if I didn't believe in the power of our local government and what you all do. And thank you for all you've done and all the leverage you have used thus far. I want to encourage you to remain diligent in the fight because we're willing to do our part as citizens. And we realize that there is only so much we can do as citizens. As you all say that there is only so much you can do as council members. But we're going to do that. And if we find any other means by which we can press this issue, we will do that. Because we are responsible, not just for how Memphis is today, but how Memphis will be thirty years from now, sixty years from now, and on into the future. I believe in Memphis. That's why I'm here as a citizen. And I believe the reason why you are sitting in the seats on the council is because you believe in this community. We have a responsibility to protect our water, our air, and our land. We have a responsibility to make sure that we leave a Memphis that promotes strong economic growth for all and is a safe place for all of us. And I thank you all for what you've done in the fight. Last, I just want to reiterate that we do want that supplemental environmental impact statement from TVA. And whatever we have to do to get it, I'm willing to do it. And I just really have faith that you all will continue to put the pressure on them and use the leverage you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you very much. Angela Johnson? Kimberly Pearson?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Munce Pearson, 1110 Starline, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. First of all, I want to say thank you for hearing our concerns. Understood that your power is limited. However, as representatives, as voices for the community, it would be very helpful and encouraging to see the people who represent us say something, do something. You can say that you would like an impact statement. You can say that it's wrong to go and input environmental racism in this neighborhood, even though, you know what I'm saying? Where is it where you support and show that you speak with the community and the people? The pressure for TVA to conduct a supplemental environmental impact statement, it should be a requirement. These companies are just coming, bulldozing, and just doing what they want to at the cost of us. Riding down the street, I'm seeing these big poof balloons of pollution and smoke. We got so much, so many toxic facilities, and we're done. We're impacted. And they're not going in communities further out where they got more agriculture. They keep coming, infiltrating our communities. And that's the problem. In reference to the House bill, knowing different legislation, we understood. You got to say your piece as well. You got lobbying. My son is there now. I understand. That's our fight. But Jaeger should hear from you. Jaeger should see you on TV. Vaughn should hear from you. He's in California. They should see that y'all are against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Angela Johnson. All right, this brings us to the end of our meeting agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. So move. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.